Somebody's watching. A meeting to order at six oh one. Uh pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which is in one nation under God. Roll call Rebecca Boynton and Shannon.
Shannon.
She had it there.
Walter Goss. Meeting minutes.
Yes, I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes. I will second that.
Zoning ordinance. So Ryan. Shows on.
Okay zoning ordinance as promised we are going to be going through our zoning ordinance and in the CEO updates later we'll be going through some other stuff that we have to work on I'll say um so if you go right past the minutes zoning and land use one of the items we discussed before is our back lots so I've kind of highlighted some discussion areas um right now LD two thousand and three has overridden our ordinances and now everyone can put an accessory dwelling unit on a back lot um so it doesn't explicitly say that in here so we may want to add that language um but also consider that it says here a backlash be three or more acres um we changed our rural lot size to forty thousand square feet which is just under an acre um and I've had people with you know four acres of land who can't split their lot but they want to create a back lot um so I say you know you could gift three acres to someone and then keep an acre for yourself and that's the only way so um there could be consideration towards making it less than three acres you can go with the underlying zone right you could say I want to keep it at three acres um it's really up to you and then also what zones they're allowed in so you have rural and general residential um you know we also have highway commercial um we have Pleasant Street Gateway Lewiston Street Gateway I feel like there are a few more zones that we could consider to allow back lots because for example if you think a Pleasant Street Gateway it's pretty rural going out there um on on the Pleasant Street Gateway towards Oxford on one twenty one um and I've had people want to do back lots along that road but I say sorry if you're on the other side of the road it's rural because one side is rural one size Pleasant Street so to me I I I didn't see a reason to so I thought I'd bring that to you too um and then of course I put a uh point E only a single family dwellings allowed we should probably create language that say um for example if you strictly enforce that um you couldn't build a shed because that's an accessory structure right so we would probably want to make language along the lines of relative like a similar accessory structures um and an accessory dwelling unit or something along those lines um so this is really for discussion um we could if you wanted to decide on various metrics today we could we only have three here um but you guys can with the vote of three oh choose to kick it to the council so it's really up to however you you all want to approach this or discuss this we could also just go through all the zoning changes or the zoning ordinance changes and wait till another meeting to decide we could postpone on it really up to you
Is there a benefit to keeping it at three acres?
It creates a less back lots so that would be you know the bigger the lot size the less back lots you can have so that that could be seen as a benefit I think that was the initial I think when this was created the lot size in rural was uh two acres or just under two acres but in general residential it's under an acre no matter where you're at so and in some instances less than half an acre um so there is a little bit of disparity there uh I will say the the lot size for rural and most of Pleasant Street Gateway Lewiston Street Gateway is the same uh because boroughs now forty thousand square feet I say at the very minimum with this we would just want to make sure we get the accessory dwelling unit language in here um so that's that's sort of the minimum I was looking at but I thought while we're looking at it I'll just highlight all these other areas and issues I've seen with people calling me and asking what they can do
Not really.
This isn't pertaining to someone that owns a piece of land and they're putting another house lot on this is this means a creative separate deed
Yeah, so in this situation and we we lowered our road frontages down to one hundred feet so that took care of a lot of these situations um because the reason why people needed a back lot is because they didn't have enough frontage to split so in rural it used to be two hundred fifty feet per lot um which you needed five hundred feet of frontage to split now you only need two hundred feet of frontage to split because you can do a hundred on each lock um what this helps with is for example in gen typically general general residential you'll see these lots with you know a hundred and fifty fifty feet of frontage right they can't split because they don't have two hundred feet um but they have four acres right so essentially they could under this back lot you know gift three acres and try to make it work with the layout of their house but it depends on where their house is located you could end up creating a funky lot um so again it's not saying that we have to lower the size but when you think about the zones you know rural there are a lot of parcels over three acres but general residential there's not so that's why you could say you could also say you have to have a land area equivalent to twice that of the underlying zone right so that way in rural you have to have two acres almost right and then in a general residential you only you can have an acre right and that kind of takes care of the density issue um but that's the only situation this would be used in most likely is if they didn't have enough road frontage to split under the current ordinance
You're saying should be more than a single family dwellings but could be a shed barn could be a commercial piece of property?
Yeah, so this um this would only be single family dwellings and because of LD two thousand and three we have to allow for a second unit accessory but you couldn't put a business on a back lot yeah but
So I thought my understanding is going to change E to make it more less restricted.
Change what?
Change E make it less restricted.
Just to add on language about accessory dwelling units because we have to allow them anyways um under the new law but also I'd like some it'd be ideal to have some language about accessory structures specifically meaning sheds garages stuff like that um just to clarify because this technically is saying only a single family dwelling is allowed to be constructed on a back lot so when again when you go by the plain language most of the backlot ordinances I've read have some language that say and
So have
If yes they should be able to and under the core current ordinances they do but based on the plain language they they can't meaning I'm saying it's not an issue but it would be nice to just still have that language um because when I read other backlog ordinances it has a little string on the end that says and uh relative accessory structures right so again they can it's it's clear in the language of the ordinance that they can also build accessory structures and I know I'm splitting hairs with that I'll admit it but when you when you plainly read this
I'm not troubled by putting
Yeah. Yeah. Sure. And this comes from just looking at other backlog ordinances and that's when I realized oh wait ours doesn't say accessory structure we should we should put that on there um but the the biggest fundamental issue with this is the accessory dwelling unit I mean an actual other unit we have to allow it and right now if someone wanted a permit I have to allow it because LD two thousand and three overrides our ordinances so there's no sense in just keeping it that way so that's the biggest reason why this is in front of you Yeah. Yeah accessory dwelling unit and accessory structures something along those lines I can have the attorneys draft it um but that that would be what we're looking for.
I would say draft it.
Is there a difference between building a shed and and having a shed but you know you know what I mean like those sheds that you can just like have delivered to your house?
Uh no difference on building no same fees same same codes same everything.
A lot of those five by eight sheds just on
Like a platform.
Oh yeah. Yeah, that's pretty common if you have a structure that's under six hundred square feet by code it doesn't have to be frost protected yeah so that's where you get that but if you have like a bigger garage you have to be on frost protected concrete Alright, so the uh the next one is building code um so this one we are moving the state of Maine is right now in the process of moving from the twenty fifteen codes to the twenty twenty one codes every three years a new code book comes out um by the International Code Council so we can either change it to twenty twenty one on all of these or we could say the latest addition and never have to do this again.
I like the latter.
Yeah. Um and you can see up above like points one and two it says you know National Electrical Code Current Edition you know so we could um I can draft up some language um for that and just make sure it makes sense um but you know we not that it matters again that because we would still apply the twenty twenty one codes but there's no sense in having ordinance that states otherwise um next one was so this is a two page um I was looking at for that floodplain rule I know we had talked about getting rid of the floodplain rule um where you can count that land towards new lots because we had a few people just get bitten by that um and then on the next page I realized that um the attorney has left in some language about being able to modify dimensional requirements and downtown business for lots under ten thousand square feet if you remember we changed that meaning any lot doesn't matter the size we can we can adjust it so we should probably you know remove note number one um and then just leave number seven down there and that will you know that specifies what we changed and I highlighted backlots are allowed in those two districts in case you guys want to change those districts or leave them you know it's up to you but that's that's why this information is here. So all on board with Yeah, yeah, that's why I thought just removing one would be the the best way to go or yeah even changing number one to read like number seven so we don't have to change where the asterisks are you know Okay.
Bring up the highway commercial.
Yeah.
Realistically could whoever in a highway commercial use LD it's like it's like their standing ground like do you catch what I'm saying like they could be like well I mean if LD two thousand
Two thousand and three yeah.
If that is supposed to help add you know make affordable housing and all that stuff wouldn't they argue that it's not in their favor because they're in a highway demand highway commercial district if that makes sense to you.
So we allow for affordable housing developments in two districts that's downtown business and highway commercial so someone very well could use highway commercial to build development the reason why we had to do that was because it's one of our designated growth areas and all of our designated growth areas have to allow for it um yeah.
For the backlot reason I don't see I mean to add highway commercial.
Yeah, I get what you're saying yeah.
Because if they can't if they have the property and they can't do that because
Yeah, understood and the only situation would help in is again if a lot had less than two hundred feet of road frontage that would be the only situation it would help and yeah it's not a there are some uh like along like Edwards Road area there's some lots back there that only have two hundred feet of frontage um other than that I think the whole development the Maury Farm development you know uh Stonebrook Drive backstreet that area that's zoned highway commercial for some reason uh I just think at some point it was so in that and someone decided to use it as a subdivision so um that's the only those are the only real areas where you see smaller lots like that um but yeah in terms of backlots using it for residential purposes I could see your point there I mean it's probably not a huge issue for that zone.
Right.
On table two shouldn't the minimum road frontage be changed?
One hundred?
Uh so in the uh so on page two that's for let me look here that's in the overlay districts if you go back to page one at the very bottom you'll see it says RP is resource protection um AM is aquifer um SZ is shoreline zoning and MH is mobile home park um that's saying that if you're in shoreline or resource protection you need more road frontage but if you go back to the first page you'll see minimum road frontage is a hundred across the board yeah that yeah so it is all one hundred it's just when you're in those resource protection zones we do require more frontage and that's because our shoreline zoning ordinance requires that and because that document is given us to the by the state we can't be less stringent we can only be more stringent yeah good catch though.
Right along.
Um so this last one so this is kind of tying into the next item but it's under the shoreline uh it's under the zoning ordinance section and new business um essentially what happened was in our shoreline zoning ordinance I know I had talked about all the timber harvesting in our zoning ordinance and it said you know timber harvesting in the shoreline zone and I said we should remove that well it turns out someone wrote into our shoreline zoning ordinance you know ten or more years ago that all the areas that talks about shoreline zoning in our land use ordinance doesn't apply anymore but they just wrote it into our shoreline ordinance and never changed it in our zoning ordinance don't ask me why um so this is this is from the codification people the people that can find all our ordinances this past year and made a whole book of them they caught it but we said don't make the adjustment now because we didn't want to touch our shoreline zoning ordinance as a part of that process we because it requires like DEP involvement and different different moving parts um but essentially this is a document they made um and those are all the sections um you'll see there's a list of two hundred dash one dash two and two hundred dash one dot eight those are all the areas where shoreline is mentioned in our zoning ordinance the redundancy we talked about at the last meetings so essentially um this is what we would want to bring to the council to say you know get this out of the zoning ordinance and our shoreline ordinance is still applicable in those areas um so again we had discussed that at a prior meeting this just puts it on a sheet of paper if we were to have that motion at council in a public hearing you would motion to remove all those sections which again are in our shoreline ordinance anyways so that that's why it's under the zoning ordinance section.
Okay, so this is this is just listing all of the places where this is repeated or it's we would be motioning to remove all of these from the zoning section because it's listed in the showing section.
Correct, yes, yeah, and that's why in the in our in our current shoreline zoning ordinance if you look at it it's on page two or three you'll see it says you know no parts of the zoning ordinance is this applicable anymore you know but so technically none of these areas are even applicable today in the zoning ordinance at least um but again they chose to just write it there instead of actually making the adjustment um so anyways this this would be making the adjustment so that's that's the end of the zoning ordinance item.
Are we suggesting that they're going to draft this is that is that what we're coming to the conclusion of?
I guess if that's your conclusion then um
Yeah, Ryan's got to go back to work.
Okay, alright I've seen some heads nod yes this has been a long time coming um but yes I mean this is this is what we talked about last month this is what we put forward um and I think when we have uh I'm gonna go over something a little bit later but I think when we have five people here maybe we could take a vote and make sure that we're on the same page.
He's approved it in the principal but yeah we haven't voted on it.
Correct.
You need to put the language in there so that we can.
Yes, correct, okay.
Very good.
Um yeah. So next steps the item six one so we're not going to go through this line by line because I don't want us to be here super late but um this is our new ordinance I've been drafting and working on I've essentially uh printed out the first seven pages okay because that's where we have some deciding to do and I have suggestions so if you go to the third page it says three at the top um our our current ordinance states what's crossed out here and essentially the reference to state statute there is incorrect the new draft given to us by the DEP corrects that section so instead of four thirty five to four forty nine it's four thirty five to four forty eight okay so that's something that I think we should just adopt you know as as is um in the highlighted section because it's a more up to date reference to our state statute um applicability our old one is crossed out so we chose to make it custom I guess when we adopted this twenty five years ago um that it applies to all areas within two hundred fifty feet of you know the Little Andrew Scoggan um the suggested language is right below um we can keep the old one and it'll probably be fine um I'm suggesting the new one just because um being nonspecific still it's still applicable within two hundred fifty feet of Little Andrew Scoggan is still applicable to all these areas but it allows for if you have another wetland or body of water or stream essentially we don't have to call it out individually like it still applies um so we could keep the old language again um but this new one is the one that the DEP is recommending that we just um it this is saying what the shoreline zoning ordinance applies to so I know we don't have a lot of shoreline it's basically the Little Andrew Scoggan River and we have some wetlands um but again we can keep the old one adopt a new one um but I'm suggesting that we do the highlighted it it's very similar and you'll notice that a lot of this is similar it's just the states made some adjustments so it's not really a change it's just something I want to be transparent about as we go forward in the process.
We don't have to clarify that it's in compliance with something such like under B that's lined out commercial industry you should shall comply with art we don't have to like list that in this new presented adopted.
No, because when your mechanic falls all the ordinances apply as as they're applicable.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's it's a little redundant I'll say to list all that which again we can it's just it doesn't change anything.
Okay.
And it makes it a person.
Yes. Yeah. So you'll see in the in in the next crossed out section if you look at point two B which is at the it's the second to last point at the bottom it says repeal of formerly adopted shoreline zoning provisions upon adoption of this chapter all provisions regulating the shoreline zone is contained in chapter two hundred are hereby repealed which is the zoning ordinance so this is what I was talking about earlier where we're we're just going to get rid of the language and just get rid of that of the zoning ordinance so it's all the same in the end it all applies the same um so if you go to the next page this is the new language replacing all of that um and we'll have to do a date of adoption once it's adopted to the council um but essentially again it's it's the same uh applicability as the old ordinance and then uh one fifty six dash eight amendments this is custom to us and I am suggesting we keep our custom uh the way we had it because if you go to the next page page five you'll see propose the crossed out section at the bottom you know it says proposed amendments to this chapter acquire approval by a majority vote of the town council and then it goes on to say more items but we have our own a uh process for amendments and this is copied straight out of our zoning ordinance so I would suggest that we remain consistent and not have a separate process for the shoreline ordinance for amendments so it's the same in chapter two hundred zoning and it's the same in chapter one fifty six shoreline okay so that is this again my suggestion um the other times I said let's do the new language this one here again it's just matches other parts of our ordinances Yeah. Yeah, I had to comb through all fifty plus pages and look for every every change that we made um so page six um just continues on with that language um and then page seven um there's a new note here refer to section one fifty six to seventeen that note that I highlighted for you um that's just new for the new ordinance and then purpose um there's a new purpose here it's very similar language but I'm suggesting we adopt the new language as it's highlighted Essentially and then added no or amendments. Yeah, so that's the new language and the new packet from the DEP.
Can we go back to page six really quick?
Yeah, sure.
There's this line out under C in the event the municipality does not have a municipal office in miss the municipal clerk shall be custodian of the map.
Yes.
What happens if we ever don't have a who will be custodian of the map then?
So when you read the first part um it it's just located in the municipal office this and the second part of that is if we do not have a municipal office you know then the clerk would hold the map but we have a municipal office so we don't need that language is is why it's crossed out.
You know why it was put in there in the first place?
Um that's the
Like afraid of natural disasters or something?
It's a good point um it's because it was the template given to us by the DEP
Okay.
Um so I'm crossing out some template language there that doesn't apply to us.
I can see that.
Yeah, no I I appreciate that no I I missed that when we were going through it but yeah that's why that's crossed out um I don't remember how it was in our current one or if there was this language in our current one but I just remember seeing that and saying well that's silly we have a municipal office so we don't need that language.
Here's the hoping.
Yeah, yeah exactly yeah um yeah so then page seven was just again just a couple of different words there but all the same um and then when you go into the next pages you've seen this document before instead of printing off over fifty pages of a shoreline zoning ordinance and saying let's go through it little by little to see all these adjustments I just took the first seven pages where we have these choices and I looked through the rest of the document line by line and they just follow these right here that we've already seen from Avco right so these are all the adjustments that are made from the last copy to the new copy and so there's I don't know how many pages here if you just go through there if you're interested in what else is changing this is all the stuff I just printed it off straight from uh straight from Avco what they sent me anyways again in the sake of transparency and of time you know I thought I would just print this off um but essentially where we're at now in this process is um if you agree with all of my findings in the first seven pages and you just want to adopt this as they've suggested which is what we did last time uh the first seven pages we made our own just like we saw um then the rest of it we adopted it exactly how the state said. Um, then the rest of it, we adopted it exactly how the state said. So if we continue with that process, this is exactly what changes and we can, we have a full shoreline zoning ordinance now. So we can push this to the council, right? And say, all right, here's our new shoreline ordinance. Um, or we could take more time for review. It's really up to you. I attached. Yeah. So, and again, this, we take this at the pace we want to. I attached the full shoreline ordinance to my last email, but I know that was sent out on Thursday last week. I'm not saying we push it forward. What I'm saying is we're done with the process right now. Like this is where we're done and we have a new ordinance. But with that said, until everyone here pushes it through, it doesn't go to the council. So if you guys want another month to review that, then I agree. So we can wait until another meeting when the members are here. Yeah. Very good. But with that comes the good news that we are done with that process unless there's more amendments, right? But it's drafted. We have it here. Um, and it's ready for our final review, I'll say.
Updates from the CEO.
So this is a little bit more extensive than usual. Um, but there's, there's a couple of updates here. You'll see the first page is finding a fax and conclusion of law. I, I alluded to this in a past meeting. Um, but essentially state statute states that within, I think it's 30 or 45 days of the receipt of an application, we have to give them a finding of facts. That's not 30 days after the planning board meeting. It's after the application is complete. So essentially what we were doing before was we'd wait to the next meeting to do the finding of facts. But we weren't meeting that timeline. So our finding of facts actually didn't matter at all. Um, and the biggest thing about finding a fax are, one, it provides an applicant with a summary of information, right? Finding a fax and conclusion of law, but also it's very important in the case of appeals to superior court. If someone disagrees with our decision and we don't have a proper finding of facts and we didn't provide it for them, they will just kick it right back to us. So it's very important that we start doing this process correct in case we do get appeals in the future.
These, these items, project description, applicant, those would all be filled out when we get it, right?
Correct. Um, I would, so what I'm proposing is I would come to you with a draft, right? At the meeting. So we would be reviewing whatever site plan, right? At one, two, three, Main Street. And I would fill it all in, you know, project applicant, property owner. I'd fill all that information in. You know, when I mailed the butter notices, um, when then it, I would leave it, you know, uh, point number 12, on this date, the planning board voted to approve or deny. I want to put, you know, I, I, I can't put that that day, right? Because I don't know what you're going to do. Um, but essentially I'd draft it all so that you all can see it. Um, and then what would happen is we would basically go through the meeting. And then if you look at the last page, which is page three, it has a little signature spot for the chair. So chair, you get the privilege. Um, when you read the law, it says within two to three days, you should have this back to the applicant. So essentially the next day I would sit down in my office, you know, make a final of this, um, with all the finding of facts. And then Walter, I'd have you come in and sign it, or I'd come to your house and deliver it to you and have you sign it. But in between there is the conclusions of law. So you'll see, you know, A aesthetic culture and natural values and B conformity with local ordinances and plans. And all of this stuff, I copy and pasted this out of our ordinance here, which is section 200 dash three dot nine of our ordinance. And this is the criteria that we review by. So here's something else that we've kind of not been doing correctly, but we haven't denied anyone yet. You are technically supposed to vote on each one of these points. So you're supposed to say, A aesthetic culture, cultural and natural values. And you vote on it, you know, approve, you know, three O, four O, whatever it is. And if one of these doesn't get of an affirmative vote, it's denied. So where that's important is, um, every attorney has a different answer to this, but it is sufficient. If you're going to approve, just to approve. But if we are going for a denial, we have to go through these one by one. It's very important that we have a specific reason why we're denying. So for example, if someone needs a waiver from us, right? But we don't want to grant them that waiver. We don't just say denied, sorry, we're not granting it. What we would do is instead B, point B, it's the top of page two. Says conformity with local ordinances and plans. Um, so we would say, you know, we'd vote number one, say, sure, yeah. But number on B, we would say, no. Right? We would vote no. And you say, why? It doesn't conform, it doesn't have road frontage, it doesn't have enough land area. It, it doesn't meet this or, or, you know, there's all sorts of ordinances, right? And I'll be, I'll try to catch them all and hand them to you and say, look, here's the waivers they need if you want to pass this, right? But we have to be specific and then we vote through the rest of them too. So that away, when we get to the end here, so if you go to page three again, it says waivers of performance standards, right? So you waive, you could waive this, these are just examples, you know, you could waive dimensional standard, which is land area, road frontage because, and if you go to the next page, sorry, I'm bringing you all over here, but I'm trying to explain this the best I can. When, in our ordinance waiver performance standards, those are the three reasons why we can waive something. And we have to be specific. So such standards do not apply to the proposed project. With the pizza takeout place, we could have said, oh, it doesn't apply to a takeout place. It only applies to a sit down restaurant, right? So we could give them that waiver based on that purpose. Okay. But we have to be specific to one of these three. So the other one, the standards would pose an economic hardship on the project or the public benefits of the project outweigh the benefits of applying the standards. So you have to be specific because again, if we don't want to grant a waiver for another project, we now have to explain why it's different that time. Right? With that said, I'm adding something else to our plate, 3.5, I've read some other people's ordinances. I feel like we could do a lot better here. Meaning make it more specific and give ourselves more leeway sort of thing. Because I've looked up other people's waiver standards and it's a lot more thorough than ours. So this is one of the few times I'm going to say we should add to our, our, our land use ordinance, but I feel like having either more reasons or more targeted reasons is good rather than vagueness. No votes here. This is only CEO updates because essentially what I'm saying is, um, yeah, I, I'm, from now on, I'm bringing this to every single site plan review. And it's going to be filled out. It's going to be, I don't want you to be surprised is what I'm saying, you know, I, I want all this to be familiar with you. But also know that there are three reasons why we can give a waiver, right? And when you go to the next page, which says 200 dash three dot nine, that's the criteria I copied and pasted straight from our ordinance. So again, and again, I want us to also understand in the future that if we are going for a denial because we don't want to grant a waiver, you know, you don't have to explain why you're not granting it. You only have to explain why you are granting it. Okay? We can deny if they do not meet a part of our ordinance, but if they meet all these parts here that are listed, it's an approval. It doesn't matter how much we like it or not, right? It's an approval. Um, but I just want us to understand that, um, for a future reference so that we're doing it correctly and we have a good paper trail. Um, but that'll be the new process. All right.
I like it.
Yes. I do too. I like being above board. So, uh, next up is you'll see an email, uh, from David Brenneman. Um, he is a part of the Lewiston Street Solar Group. So the latest solar field we had on Lewiston Street, um, had to make some adjustments because the DOT granted their permit for entrance, but they couldn't put it on the same part of the parcel as they planned. So our ordinance reads, and I asked for Walter's opinion on this. It reads that I can grant minor changes, major changes have to come back to the planning board. There are no major changes and he lists them here. Essentially because he had to move the driveway, they had to shift a couple more components, right? So I brought it to Walter and I said, hey, um, do you want to see this back at planning board again, or is this minor enough? And Walter, you agree that it's, it's pretty minor stuff. Um, so this is more of a FYI. Um, here's what they're changing. Um, it doesn't change anything other than the entrance and moving some parts around.
Actually moves the entrance farther away from the residence and closest to.
Yes, it does.
Beneficial to the abutting, yeah.
Yeah. And this is purely because of the, again, the DOT didn't like how close they were to that driveway. And they've wanted it in a different spot. So it, it, it's less convenient, I think, for their site plan, but it, it's what the DOT wanted. Um, so I'm, I'm letting you all know here that they're making minor adjustments. So if you see that being built and you see the entrance in a different spot, we all know why. It was above board. Don't worry. Um, so they might be bringing us a new site plan to sign. Okay. And that'll just be a part of CEO updates at one point, right? And then we'll just sign it and they'll have those changes. Last one, at the very last page, um, we're not tackling this tonight. I'm still getting information. I just don't want it to hit you out of the blue if I bring it to a future meeting. Essentially the water department wants to do some timber harvesting, um, at their parcel out on, is it Winterbrook? Where the, we get our water supply. Essentially this is our harvesting standards for our aquifer protection area, which they are under over there. And essentially they can't harvest during March, April or May. Um, they can't harvest within a hundred feet of any brook or tributary stream. Uh, there are all sorts of rules. So I was basically asked by a few to relook at these. So what I've done thus far is I've contacted the DEP. I've contacted the main drinking water program, right? At the state. I've contacted all sorts of very smart people who know a lot about timber harvesting and water quality. And I've said, hey, would this cause harm to our water quality if we changed it? So the three that would help the harvest are the last three. And when the, uh, the main drinking water program got back to me, they said they liked the last three and those should remain. So right now, no action because I think we're not going to change anything. Um, but I am letting you know this in case some other smart person at the state, you know, comes and voices their opinion and says, no, you should just go by the state standards like we did with shoreline, right? And you should just get rid of all these and the state standards will apply anyways. These are just more restrictive than what the state gives. So I am not suggesting we change these unless someone who's very, very smart, like a hydrologist or something, you know, can tell us, you know, this, this would not do harm.
So they want to what? Cut down trees over there?
Yeah. So they want to do a timber harvest. Um, it's just, all the wooded lots you see, most of them, you know, they do timber harvest. It wouldn't be clearing the lot, but essentially every 10 or 15 years, you'll see wooded lots still have some trees taken down here or there if they're mature or hazardous. Huh?
Selective cutting.
Selective cutting. Yeah. That's a good way to put it. Um, so they want to do selective cut over there, but they can't right now. So because of this ordinance, so they'll have to wait till, you know, June to do it. Um, but they also can't get nearly as much harvest because of our setback from the streams, which again, the CD, the, not the CDC, the main drinking water program. Um, I'm not sure if it's an umbrella of the CDC or not, um, has suggested that we keep the standard. Um, but this, if, again, if someone else chimes in, I've only gotten, I've only heard back from two people. So, but there are a lot of people that work for the state. So if someone else chimes in and we get a consensus, I might bring it back up. I'm just letting you know now that no action, but we could see it in the future.
Now what's, what's, is, what's the benefit to them wanting to do that?
Um, change the ordinance?
No. Cutting timber harvest.
Oh, just money. You get some money.
And it makes, oh, okay. If you take older trees, you can plant newer trees.
Yeah.
Rather than having dead timber.
I remember that road and water up there in the springtime when you totally destroyed that road.
Yeah. Muddy.
I think it was on my property. Was it? I think it was.
I don't know, but the road was just demolished.
What is, what is slash? All slash larger than three inches. That, that just stuff they cut down? All slash larger than three inches. I'm just curious. Burning of slash is prohibited. That's the stuff that they cut down.
I'm thinking so. And there is, to be fair, there is new technology, you know, 30 years ago, it was a very dirty job. Like the very muddy, it would cause a lot of phosphorus to start running, you know, and today it's a lot cleaner with the, with the machinery they have. But again, if the smart people are saying, keep the standards, I, I, I don't think it's class to get rid of them.
It's all money. It's all soft money.
Yeah. So if they wait till June, they can harvest, you know, but it also applies to anywhere in that zone. Um,
Are they just looking to get ahead of the game? Like, are they just looking to get an early start on it? Is that what they're asking?
Early start. Well, they like to do, they want, so the two reasons are one, they can get closer to the streams, right? And get more harvest. Um, but the second one is, yeah, they can, the, that road is not posted during the winter. So excavators love that. Um, because you know, they can't work on a back road, but they can work on that road. So it gives them work to do during the mud season. So that's, that's the two big, big pushes.
Right.
Yeah, for,
Usually in March, April, May.
Exactly right. So. Yeah, that's who's doing the harvest. So that's, that's our big long meeting agenda here. So with that said, uh, last item would be, so we have a, uh, subdivision and I'll just talk about this now so I don't have to call you individually. Um, we have a subdivision, um, issue, I'll say, meaning someone built a garage and they, they saw the wrong pin and they essentially built the garage one foot over the property line. They have to be at least 10 feet from the property line. Um, so essentially they're, they want to do an amendment and they want to get the transaction closed because the bank won't close until they, you can amend the lines, you know, and get like do some land, but when it's an approved subdivision, you have to go through the planning board, I guess, to make that adjustment. That's what they're choosing to do, I'll say. So essentially they want to know if we would do a special meeting on the 20th of March so that they can do that and get the transaction closed. So I'm, I guess, trying to see if we can get a quorum for that day. I can call the other two that are not here. Um, or a different day that week, you know, if, if we think a different day would work.
I can make the 20th work. The 18th would be better for me, but I can make the 20th work.
Okay. So the 18th would be better. Anyone else work for the 18th?
I can do any day. I don't know.
Okay. So I, I think, Yeah.
I'm retired. I don't have much time.
Can you pencil this in, Walter?
Great. Yeah. So I can, I can try to schedule it for the 18th. So he told me he would have, the surveyor said he'd have the plans by the end of this week and I have to give one week notice. So that would be perfect. We can go ahead for the 18th. I'll put in the calendar here. And we'll try to meet that day. I'll send another reminder out when it's official, when I have the plan in hand and I'm sending the stuff out, but you know, it's, it's good. They're working together to, to take care of it.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise he'd have to tear the garage down.
Big oops.
Six. Same time, six?
Six o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Great. That's all I had.
Got it. I'll, uh, I'll present a motion to adjourn the meeting. Second.